I'd like to call the Selectment's meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as some of you know, and the TV audience may not know yet, the public hearing for the LIDC transfer of land that was scheduled for 4:30 was canceled. It was canceled because a group of registered voters hired an attorney and presented a petition which by law takes the issue to a warrant article at next town meeting. So there's no point in having a public hearing because it is out of the hands of the Selectment and will be in the hands of the voters next March. So we'll continue with the Selectment's meeting. The first item was the public hearing, which of course is canceled. The second item is appointments, of which there are none that I'm aware of. The third item is the Town Manager's Report.
The first item is going to have Joe DePalma speak about storm damage. I don't see him here yet, but I can just give you a brief update. I think most of the roads have been pretty well cleaned up. I think there's still some ditch work to be done. Grafton County, I think, experienced over $10 million worth of damage. Our initial estimate had Littleton at over a half a million dollars worth of damage. The regional FEMA representative was scheduled to be here today touring the town and will probably have more information on that, so we'll see if we qualify for some assistance.
Where was the worst damage? Was there a particular road or a couple of roads that had the most damage?
There was some areas where the drainage, like culverts, were just skipped, I think, over on Union Street, the Palmer Brook. Yeah, there's also a lot of flooding in Mobile Home Park that's cut off. I think there was some voluntary evacuation. Mans Hill, from what I understand, there was, a lot of our ditches were filled up with material.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work that's going to need to be done to help prepare us to be, you know, back ready for future events.
We had no road closures, so...
I think we, Joe did speak to it, I think there may have been some areas that were temporarily closed.
For a period of time, okay.
Yeah, I did a little tour around some other areas of Grafton County this weekend. We definitely, we had some good damage, but I'll tell you, over on 116 and Benton and that area, it was pretty bad and it's still closed. The next item, year-to-date budget overview. I think it was the last meeting we had just spoken, wanted to see a little bit different of a report to show some year-to-date figures from last year compared to this year. Karen is here to talk a little bit about that.
Andrew gave me your request, I know it's hard to read on the screen here, but your request to add the year-to-date for 2016. So what I did is put a column to the left of the 2017 budgeted amounts, so you could look at 2016 year-to-date and compare them to 2017 year-to-date. On the revenue side, we're a little down from last year on revenues. Some of that has to do with sewer users. We have some billing out that we need to enter on here, which is about $100,000, which the difference would be less than $100,000 if we added that in. We're at 42% of our revenues. A lot of that is the state revenues. Don't come in until December for the rooms and meals. Our larger pieces of revenues may not come in until October or December. So December's more or less a catch-up on this. The revenues at the transfer station are up compared to last year's. The revenues at Parks and Rec are up, almost double from what they were last year, and I'm not sure if people started paying ahead.
So you don't know if it's a timing issue or if...
We do know that enrollment in the summer program has gone way up. I think that what we'll see though is, because of the number of kids, you have to have a certain number of staff, so there will be some offsetting, but I think that we're looking pretty good even with that.
Now reviewing the expenditures, last year's expenditures, and I'm just going to give you the total, was $3,929,078 for 2016 year-to-date to the end of June. This year it's $4,102,926. So there's about a $200,000 difference. We all know that there's been increases in different parts of the budget throughout. We've had some increases, of course, we had added staff that weren't in for the full year last year, they're in there for this year. We have paid out workers' comp for the full year. We've had some entities like the cemeteries and dispatch that request their appropriations ahead of time, so that does affect the amount that is expended. Right now, we're expended at 46.99%, and calculating by the number of weeks, we should be at 50%. So we are under that 50%. Now, there are bills that come in after the end of the month, so that should even us out. It is a very tight budget this year, not a lot of room for anything. Then I've given you on the backside the warrant articles. Each year the warrant articles change, so it's hard to compare last year's to this year's, but I've given you what's been expended out so far this year. We haven't expended any of the $2 million yet on the sewer upgrades, but we will be coming along with that fairly soon. So we have budgeted for warrant articles that are approved, $2,490,303. We've expended so far to date, $261,727. So we haven't expended all of our warrant articles, and the biggest share of that's at $2 million. So are there any questions I can help you with?
Just a clarification on the sewer fees. These are fees that have been collected but not posted.
They're posted, the fees as far as the sewer haulers haven't been posted in here, but the sewer billing out for the first billing of the year has been posted in here.
Right. But that $100,000 is in, it's in, but it's not been recorded yet?
Recorded.
Okay, thank you.
So when we're looking at these various departments, so Fire Department I have to look at, or Police Public Works, those numbers, do those numbers include all their expenses, salaries and...
Yes.
Other expenses?
As of the end of June.
I understand, okay. What falls under general government buildings?
That would be, if there were repairs needed, that might be a combined repair. One thing that we do have is pest control, so we have someone go out to the different buildings under a contract and do pest control, check the different buildings for...
So it's maintenance and repairs to the buildings?
Yeah.
You also got a person that moves around from building to building?
Yes.
In the past, we were going to have someone to just coordinate activities, like, for example, one of the examples I use is the overhead garage doors. We have, you know, different contract with PD Highway Fire, and so just getting somebody to coordinate, or if there's just ongoing maintenance that needs to be done, some of the, like, we ran into an issue where whose responsibilities is the check-up payable or maintaining, you know, organized contractors, and we didn't really have anybody. So in, I think it was the previous year's budget, we created some funds to be available to bring on somebody just part-time who does similar work for some other organizations in town, so we get them for a little bit in other organizations, and it's been working really well.
And that falls under this general government buildings?
It also is the data contract of the town office, so our data and our telephone systems go under that.
Server, server.
The server, yes, and repairs and equipment that we might need would go into that department because it's not just one unit or one department using it, it's a variety of departments. The other thing is fire inspections, trying to make sure that we have fire inspections done. They're very small, but they're done by a company that does it for the state, and in effort to make sure that all of our buildings are meeting some form of safety code.
This is great, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you don't have any other questions on that, and you don't mind, I'd like to just move back to storm damage because Joe can speak to it and asking photographs.
You're up, Captain.
Just got through with FEMA, sorry, it was not FEMA, it's like getting it, you know, 1:00 till 5:00. We did a little overview of storm damage photographically, and then we toured the sites, specifically, didn't tour them all, toured a lot of line share, a little problematic ones, a little more expensive ones. And they took, these photos are going to be sent to them electronically, they're going to review them and go forward. So we're moving forward with FEMA application, the money, the application we filed last week, about $640,000, what we thought we had for dollar value damage, including some engineering costs associated with some of the repairs. Some of the more obvious repairs were Mans Hill, Gary's Drive, I actually pitched that, you've seen them or not. We have pitched, we have Old Whitefield Road, we have a lot of erosion on Old Whitefield Road that looks like it's, it's not the biggest problem right now, but it's going to be a problem down the road, so we're trying to put that into our FEMA plan as well. But the Gary's Drive, that was the most, at Mans Hill, that was the most problematic for the residents of Littleton. And that would be, spent most of our time just now, I'd like to show you these pictures.
Joe, was there any road closures?
Yes, so Gary's Drive and Mans Hill Road were closed. This is probably the best one, that's what, little police helping us. This is the bridge underneath, and now that's dried out, it's got some damage to it, and they did, they did get rid of the bridge and photographed that as well. A lot of these, a lot of the damage they saw today, we've already fixed. These are the residents who are most impacted and the trailers right there. Wind is powerful, so we blew some culverts, blocks culvert on South Street by Riverside A lot of this, a lot of this damage was already, it had been decaying over years, but the storm exacerbated it quite a bit. You see the scouring and the displacement underneath the, underneath this culvert, and cracking, and then the leaking through, and obvious signs of distress. We didn't get any financial commitment from them, but we were told we had the best photographs so far.
Bruce, photographer.
Joe, on the, on the way into Bethlehem, on Route 3, as you're coming down the hill and going up the hill towards Bethlehem.
On Route 3 and 302?
3, I'm sorry, 302.
Yeah.
There's, was heavy water running down the road. The road actually became a shelf because the ground underneath it pulled away. Did you have any of that here?
Yeah, I did see that over the weekend in Bethlehem. We had that on Gannon Road, the road I have the lot of all roads. Gannon Road had completely undermined all the way across, and I didn't check it, so I said, "I'll check that on my way home." When I got home, I found that we had to close Gannon Road. That was closer to the weekend. That was, that was a good example of that kind of undermining there. Bromstedt Hill Road was closed, so we had 11 roads that were impacted to a significant degree. Bromstedt Hill Road was probably the most expensive repair so far. Gary's Drive and Mans Hill was the most visible, noticeable one. We fixed that, we've armored that. The embankment, you can see that abutment in one of the 4x6s that shows a lot of erosion. We placed erosion stone quickly there to stabilize the road, then we took the erosion stone out, this past Friday morning, and I poured concrete, armored with concrete all the way across. So that's kind of an inexpensive fix for now, but Bromstedt Hill Road was the most expensive repair, and Gannon Road was probably second most expensive place. 11 roads altogether.
So you're looking at $700,000 plus?
Six, yeah.
Six plus?
Yeah, I think, we thought the number was maybe $500,000, but we put in some engineering for the, if we're going to do a half a mile of wall along Old Whitefield Road, the pictures show a lot of that, I'll show you, I don't have them right here. Old Whitefield Road, it's, the erosion is coming right down onto the road, and that's in, there's a few random spots that's occurring, but cumulatively that distance is a half a mile. So it's an engineer or half a mile of road stabilization there, I thought, would warrant an engineer. And then the bridge, the bridge at Gary's Drive, well, we just talked of, there's some undersized culverts there on Gary's Drive and Mans Hill Road that are going to need a study, hydraulic study and some engineering to decide what kind of upgrades we're going to do, whether we're going to replace it or not, and maybe some realignment.
What are your, what are your thoughts on the success of the FEMA application, the likelihood of success?
I think it was a good, it was a good meeting. We just, it just ended, like I said, about 5, 10 minutes ago, and they felt good about it. They said they want to go forward with everything. They couldn't promise us anything, but they coached me on how they'd like to see. Our paperwork presented them backdated to the date of the storm, backdated the maintenance records maybe to that culvert, all the way to how they want to go forward, and I think that we're going to, maybe we won't see the whole, we won't see the whole piece, but we'll see something. What I was, of all the damaged, damaged photos I just showed you, showed you just now, what I tried to emphasize to FEMA the most was, even if we don't get a single piece of pipe from them, all our ditch lines are full now, from all the crazy, such a heavy rain that we've had last Saturday and then this past Saturday, two Saturdays in a row, ditch lines are full. So even if we don't get a nickel in material costs whatsoever, we need 60, 70 days of labor of a backup operator, two dump truck drivers, and two flagmen to restore, just to restore our ditches back to the way they were on Mans Hill, on Mount Eustis, on other roads around town. Just, that's 60, 60 or 70 days of labor just right there for the whole crew, just to get the ditches back. Because the ditches were all, they were all, the reason why we didn't lose more roads is the ditches were good. The ditching, the ditching was right, the cleaning around the culverts was right, everything was flushed and maintained, and now they're all half-plugged with mud or three-quarters plugged with mud, and we're not in condition to accept another rainstorm like that. So even if we, like I said, we don't get anything at all, materials, we just want the labor to clean us up, to get us back to where we were, make us whole again. Also showing the potters like wall, because that seemed to change after the storm, and they looked at that as well.
Did you see any damage to any of the, our storm drain or sewer infrastructure?
Yes. Oh, sewer infrastructure?
Yeah.
No, I didn't get a number from utility parks of what maybe, what inflow, what the extra water cost us down there, I didn't get that number. But we did lose six catch bases, the six catch bases we replaced, and FEMA didn't visit them all, they accepted photographs, and they want some footages with that, they visited a couple, didn't visit them all.
So as far as, sorry, so as far as the ditches and the labor required to clean that ditching out, we're going forward, getting that, what we can done, we don't, we aren't waiting on FEMA for stuff?
No, that's right. I kind of, I gave them a little bit of a shot, I said, "No, we're going to keep spending money hoping that you pay us," and I have to, though, we can't, we've been, I took them to roads that, most of the touring we did today was, a bridge that's already been fixed, a road that's already been fixed, Bromstedt Hill Road looks better than it ever has, Gannon Road has been fixed. Most of the jobs we looked at were already all fixed, it was only, we had one, we had one road left to grade tomorrow, we didn't grade yet, that was, I took them to that road too, but they were looking at restored work that I'm hoping to get refunded for. We didn't, obviously, going forward with the bridges, we didn't fix the bridge, we didn't, you know, change the culverts, we're looking for that, but I'm also looking for the labor we've already spent, the guys worked up right through the holiday, you know, over the past weekend, this past weekend we didn't run any overtime, but there was a lot of overtime when we came before, and then a lot of man hours and stuff like that. Even the pool had impacts, the pool had to be closed for two days, couldn't get chlorine in, so much, so full of water. Fields, some of the athletic fields were impacted too. Those numbers I don't have, I don't, I didn't have to have done, just to give FEMA for that, Joe and I kept those out of the initial application.
Yes, so those that don't know, Joe and his crew were on this thing from the beginning, and Joe kept me informed with texts and pictures and so forth, so, thank you.
Well, thanks.
You did a great job.
Thanks.
Anything else? Public comment will come later, Bruce.
Next item we have is just a personnel policy update. Karen's, two as you just also present to you for future consideration, just give you a little documentation.
These are for future, future approval, but I wanted to give them out to you. We are looking at some changes to our harassment and sexual harassment and hostile work environment policies. Right now, we have two policies, they've been in place since 2002, I think the last time the sexual harassment was updated in 2007. I've sent them to the insurance company for review, and they sent me back a recommended policy that's consolidated, that gives a lot more detail of what is considered harassment, what is considered sexual harassment. It also gives what are some of the specific information that we would need if it was going to be reported, the covered individuals by the policy, the mandated or mandatory reporting procedure, how to report discrimination, harassment and retaliation, and the investigation process. So this was recommended and suggested by the insurance company that covers the town, and I'd like at some point for the Selectmen to review this and approve it, so that we can have a class with the insurance company present to present this policy out to our employees.
Karen, you had a, the town had a relatively extensive harassment policy before getting these changes, so in what area was there any significant alteration, other than just language changes that this insurance carrier preferred over what we may have already had?
Well, it spells out in more detail what is considered, you know, written and spoken derogatory terms about sex, race, color, national origin, religion, et cetera, slurs,
but a lot of this, a lot of this was in the old policy as well. The section here that I would raise a question to them about, just looking at it quickly, is the retaliation prohibited section. That's one simple little paragraph, that could be a page by itself, but anyway, we'll take a look at this, thank you.
We'll look at it and get back to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question here? So you said that you had sent one to the insurance company, they sent back with some more detail and stuff, so the suggested one you have here reflects what, that information?
Correct. So they're basically combining our harassment and hostile work environment and our sexual harassment policy into one policy that covers all of that, and it's their suggested changes. They did say ours was acceptable, but this is a little bit more detailed.
Okay, thank you.
So next up, just to give you a Safe Roots to School project update, construction began today, you know, background on funding was awarded in 2012, we amended the project in 2015, got approved by DOT. After getting a engineering budget update, we noted that we needed an increase, we got approved the increase this year, and we awarded a contract to Calder Construction out of North Woodstock, and the contractor began today in Union Street, and went down there today, drivers should be careful, I noticed somebody running through the crosswalk, and I think they were distracted by this and I mean, just all the construction, has kind of people, you know, a little confused, but it's clearly marked, it's still two-way, it's just you're driving in the turning lane. And substantial completion should be before the beginning of school on August 23rd, and the project basically is 1,400 feet of sidewalk crossing improvements, ADA improvements to the Lakeway entrance, and they've got a, they're pretty deep right now, I think they must be working on some kind of electrical issue for, or for the electrical work for the beacon crossing, I believe, so, just to give everybody an update on that.
Good, great.
The other sections of the Safe Roots to School are also included though, right? This is just the Lakeway component?
That's correct, so this, the project, they're going to start at Lakeway and work down the western side of Union, then after they're done with that, they're going to shift over to Pleasant Street and work their way down Pleasant Street, so.
Okay, thank you.
And most of the work should be out of the right of way, I think that, you know, we had to go get a number of construction easements, temporary construction easements from the property owners along Pleasant Street, and, you know, that's, I think, probably like maniacs type work will be, should be out of the right of way for the most part.
Okay.
So you're done? You're done? So the next, under other business is the zoning officer appointment from now until March of, the end of March 2018?
So we've received one letter of interest at this point, and it would be to fill the remaining, the resigned zoning officer, David Moberly, the Littleton resident, you know, from a state, recent from a state grant, to submit a letter of interest for that position.
So we need to take action on that?
Yeah.
And we should probably do that under board action rather than now?
Yeah.
Under old business, I see nothing. Under new business, I see new road name for Mobile Home Park on Railroad Street?
So I think this was, had been through the whole planning, zoning process back in, I think it was 2014, and you can see the sites are ready, and under E911, they need to come up with a road name, and the name that they suggested is Crow's View Drive for consideration.
I think in the event that somebody's got a problem with that, we'll take that up under board action so that we can have public comment if necessary, which takes us to public comment. Okay, we're now open the meeting to public comment. I see Bruce's hand up first. He's deferring to you.
Sure, yeah, my name is Richard Woolsey, I live at Maple Street and just above I Street, 101 Maple, across from the school. One concern is a personal one, and that is, the school has... the school has great resistance against cleaning up their parking lot at the corner of High and Maple, I don't know why, but they just will not clean it up, you know, most of us know that in the fall you clean up the leaves because in the spring they'll be wet and matted, and it's hard, so, I have been for years cleaning out the leaves and mowing the grass around the two perimeters, which is very small, and have asked them more than twice to do this, and they just failed to do it, it's a pretty small job, but I'm tired of it, I'm old, and I'm not gonna do it anymore, and I hope that they would do it, and I have talked to them personally at their school meetings a couple, three years ago, maybe twice, different years, and it's like asking a kid to clean up his room, you know, we'll take it under advisement, you know, well, you know a euphemism when you see one, so, that means we're not gonna do it, and it's just a pain, it's a small job, they can bring their trailer with a tarp, you put the leaves on it, you take them away, and then once a month you mow the grass, takes about half hour, you know, it just won't do it.
Why don't we see if the town manager has more clout and can get this accomplished?
And then a different concern is a generalized lawlessness of drivers, which I observe at that intersection without even moving out of my chair, a large percentage just run the stop sign, mostly on High Street, but sometimes going down the other way on Maple, a lot of drivers just run the stop sign on High Street, it's a four-way stop, which makes it different from the other three corners of the school property, which are two-way stops, a four-way stop means to a lot of people, everybody else is gonna stop, so I can just go through, I would suggest you might change that one to a two-way stop, stopping the traffic on High Street and allowing the hill traffic to go through it like the other streets, also this creates a confusion among people who are using these streets all the time, you know, the three being two-way stops, this one being a four-way, so, it's, nobody has gone through at the same time as someone else yet, but it will happen eventually, and worse than that, it creates a whole attitude in people that this is okay, we can run the stop sign, we don't get a ticket, and on top of that, there's also cutting the usual suspects at speed around the neighborhood and don't observe any laws, but, just that, these are just regular folks in their SUVs coasting through this stop sign at fifteen, twenty miles an hour, no attempt to stop whatsoever.
I, I see Andrew writing, so I think this conversation will be transferred to the police chief, we'll take, we'll take a look.
The only other thing I can do is take my chair around to the back of my house, so I don't have to look.
Is the parking lot, backup parking lot, where the mulch is being stored out by the school?
Uh, that one, yeah, yeah, it's been there for some time, but mostly it's the leaves that I rake out, and last year I raked all the leaves out, this happened two or three times, rake all the leaves out into a big pot, they wait until it snows and then they just snowplow them back into where I raked them out, well, you know, under the rug.
Yep.
They could do better than that, so, thank you.
We'll look into both of those for you, thank you.
That's my only concern, is this, thanks.
Thanks.
Bruce?
My first observation was that the old Whitefield Road, I'm not positive, that's state highway, that was the original highway that went to Whitefield, and I don't think it's ever been turned over to the town of Olaf, so if you've got damages that occur, you should look at and possibly be willing to stay in the DM, staying to it out there on the map, the town, unless you can find evidence, the fact that that road was actually taken over by the town, but that road in turn was the original road that went to Whitefield, so consequently you should be not having to try, to try to see if you can recapture your money from the state of the thing on it, if there's no ownership to it. Want to say my name?
I'll look into that, Bruce, so I've been here not as long as you, like seventeen years, and it's been posted by Littleton the last seventeen years and maintained.
Posted all along, but they don't have a D, and doesn't own it, and the ownership, or there's still, the state, the state in turn is the responsible body to it, so it doesn't have to go to the taxpayers.
We'll look into it.
I'll look into that, that might, that's a good, good thought, thank you.
That was one, I got two or three things, I don't know whether they're all in, the hearing that you guys postponed.
We didn't postpone it.
Uh, canceled it.
We didn't cancel it either.
You didn't?
The legal action did.
Okay, I tried to find out by looking in the minutes of the meeting, of where the town had actually ever had in the minutes of the meeting, the article that was presented to the public out of the thing on it for this one dollar, I found nothing, where was it, who did it?
I didn't bring that up, it was, remember Bruce, it goes back to sixty, 1968?
No, no, that's a sale, we're talking about a different thing, I'm talking about you people in turn made a motion, somebody made a motion to sell this piece of property over here for the sum of one dollar.
It reflected a, it reflected a warrant article that passed the town like eight hundred to a hundred and twenty, or it was a large spread, and the word, remember the word nominal was used in the?
I found no evidence of the fact of in your meetings that you have anything on it that said it was a particular motion made.
Oh, I see, okay, there you're right.
So I'm looking to ask you where the motion was made for the article?
Oops, I think it was in 2014.
No, no, that's not, that's, that's.
At a meeting.
That's a sale, this is an article that they proposed and sold to the industrial park for the sum of one dollar.
I think it generally wasn't right.
I don't think, I think yours is right, I don't think it was ever in the warrant, but we were following that wording from an old warrant article that used the word nominal, and remember I gave a definition of nominal, which could be anything from a penny up to ten thousand dollars. But you're right, I don't, I don't think it's pure.
Yeah, I found nothing, no, I, if I'm not mistaken, I was in a meeting in here in the first part of April, and you people in turn adjourned it into a private session out of the thing on it, and I, because you don't have your records, it's appealing that the public can't find out, is that what you proposed and came up with this?
I don't think so, I think the dollar was just kind of like a standard number, because over a number of years as parcels were sold, that was, that was the going rate, if I can use that term.
No, I guess never been a dollar figure from that, I, I, it doesn't make any difference, I still don't think it, I'm trying to find out the way you came up with that information on it, and, you know, I have found nothing.
Isn't the whole thing moot at this point?
No.
At least on the.
Yeah, it is.
It's not moot, moot, or whatever the word is on it, it, it isn't because of the fact that if in fact it's filed certain on that board, he's on the board directors, the industrial part, and when he voted, and if he voted on this, this article is completely illegal.
Well, it doesn't, that's, it's moot because they just filed a petition to have it go to town meeting anyways.
If in fact that he is, if he voted on that one to put it on here for the sum of one dollar, and he in turn was on the industrial board, this whole thing is not to go on to the town record because it's been done illegally, okay? That's what I'm trying to find out.
I think there were passed parcels though that went over to LIDC for a very small amount of money, whether it was a dollar or whatever, it preceded Skylar being on the board, but the word nominal was the operative, operative word back then, and I think the dollar was just what it was.
There was a specific item for a dollar, and how did it get to the dollar and who put it on it, and I don't, I don't find, I don't find any evidence of it that it was came out.
It's a good question, I, I think it was just standard operating procedure from past, past transfers, that's what I think.
The answer is we don't know, you can't find it, and I don't have an answer, I don't know.
Then I believe, then it is an illegal article and it shouldn't even be placed on the town warrant as to the fifty people, and I was wanting to sign it on too.
The article, as was explained in the article, was a housekeeping item because of the right of way from the 2014 article, which was long before I was involved with any select board.
I understand that.
All that was, was a carryforward from 2014 with the right of way language added.
But there was no evidence of anything within the town records for the sum of one dollar, and it was as was laid up by the state.
And it's, and, so, what's the point?
Yeah.
It's moot.
No, the point is, if in fact you voted on it, as you're on the board of directors of that, then you've got a problem in here, and that shouldn't even be taken into consideration because it's illegal.
Apparently I didn't vote on it because you can't find it, it's not in the minutes.
Then why, how, how did it get there, you need to come up with the answer, that's you people need to come up with the answer.
Doesn't matter.
How did what get there, I'm not sure I understand even the question still, because we got, are you asking how did the decision get made to sell it for one dollar?
Yes, and a, and a vote.
We haven't voted on it yet, or at least not this board hasn't, but I've been saying.
How did it get coming up in front of all the people in the community as the selling of the road, someone else?
I think over the years, as they transferred parcels, that's what it came to, the dollar. In fact, I have an email from, from someone who thought, because he kind of was answering the question without ever hearing the question, he said it's been, I'm using the word standard operating procedure, but a dollar has been the common denominator, they had to transfer it for a cost, there was this nominal language that came out of one warrant article years ago, and somebody picked a dollar, and it's usually been that way ever since, I think.
Show me any.
That's, that's the best I can.
Well, I, I, I obviously wasn't a selectman then, but I did ask that question, and I was told that previous parcels were sold for a dollar.
I don't think there's ever gonna be a purchase possible for a dollar from the town.
Have to look it up.
We can look it up.
Yeah, let's look it up.
I think the law allows.
But again, I, I understand what you're saying, but that petition makes this whole thing moot, because it's gotta go back to town meeting as, in a different warrant article, right?
Yeah, Bruce is raising a different question though, and the question is basically, according to the law, as we've had it explained to us by council, select boards have the right to do this, they set the price, if you have a warrant article where you're demanding that the price be listed, that's, that's a possibility, but the boards have never been experienced that before.
I'm looking for if the select board has the right to set the price, who set the price and where, there's no evidence of it that I've been able to.
I think, I think they do have that right, and, but your, your point is a good one in terms of maybe it needs to be in the warrant, this parcel goes for five thousand, this parcel goes for a dollar, this parcel, or maybe, maybe it has to come from the community as a petition warrant article going forward, it won't, it won't include this one, but if you want the board, unless there's some reason that the state would say you can't do that, I think what you're asking for is a petition warrant article to make sure going forward, it's kind of like what you did for us some years ago with, with lease purchase, you came up with a recommendation for us, and it's been followed ever since, and I think this may be in that same area, because I think boards have a lot of latitude to set the price.
But you've got to vote on it, it's gotta be a vote, you just can't have latitude and get it from heaven, and you don't, you just have the three people up there, you can't just run this business from heaven, okay?
Yeah, we're not in heaven.
Okay, so you don't buy, this did what, I'm asking.
I sense the request is to, to sell this parcel, the town either approves or doesn't approve, and then it's silent, so I think the boards, the, select boards have some negotiating ability to set the price at whatever level they want it.
You've got to vote on it to do that.
You know, we haven't, we haven't done that, in all honesty, we haven't.
That's part of.
Now come, we've been listening to it in an article, and we've been holding hearings, and it's been set for a sum of one dollar.
Because the, the history of, of these transfers has, has developed.
So the, so the.
You're all on smoke on it.
No, no, we're not, hold on a second, we, we, we haven't voted on that because we have to have these public hearings on it, we, we may.
Somebody's got to have given the item to have a hearing on, and that had to come from the board of selectmen.
I think a current expectation is that we, this board would follow what the past boards have done when they've done these transfers, I think that's as far as.
That's exactly what happened.
It's, we're not select, we're not deciding on the sale of this for any price, it's out of our hands. We can't do anything, what, what happens to the warrant article in March, the warrant article itself will be drawn by town attorney.
That doesn't make any difference, if it's done illegally in the beginning, then it shouldn't even be put on, why?
It's, all it is, is a repeat of 2014, which was done legally, with the exception.
That didn't, that gave you the rights to sell, but nobody set the figure at one dollar, you people have had to do it as a vote.
We didn't set it at one dollar because we didn't decide it.
Right.
Well, what we have in these holdings, these hearings on it coming out was presented from the selectmen and the town for the sum of one dollar.
I think the hearings had more to do with the rationale of transferring, not so much because.
It was suggested a dollar, it wasn't set, nothing was set.
And I don't think we have to set, that, that's the point, in, in the.
Well, we can't now.
Right, but.
We're done.
When, when we can, we don't have to state the price.
I got two or three other questions that I don't mind, I don't know whether they're right to know this one or not, but I'd like to know where you stand on how many people have filed for abatement on the town taxes?
In the past year, let's say?
This last, this last year. Where do we stand?
I don't understand what you mean by where do we stand.
How many were requested?
I don't know what you understand, but when, when your tax bills go wild.
Yeah, I understand that.
Everybody gets them, and they have the rights to file for an abatement on the thing.
I understand, but I don't understand is what.
Usually what has happened out is the power companies in turn to make big assessments and file for these abatements, I'm asking, how many do you have, number one, and number two, how many of them are relative to the power companies, have they filed, on the news, it's been the fact that the, that was sourced in turn has filed all of the state of companions for tax abatements on the thing on it, this is a relevant thing that can affect the taxes for the community out of it on our basis, I'm asking this question.
To answer your question, I don't know, if it's public information, we'd be happy to give it to you.
It is public information.
We'd be happy to give it to you, you're not gonna get it right now because I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, can we get it by the next meeting as to how many, July is the date they have to have it from.
Please stop by the town office, we'd be happy to give it to you.
Okay, that would be the first one, where are we relevant to the power company that we're dealing with on the new ownership of the power company in the town of Littleton as well as the other DMs?
They have contacted us to set up a meeting, and I don't believe we've reached an agreeable date yet, so we have not spoken to them yet.
Have they filed for a tax evasion?
Don't know, I don't think so.
No, they, we haven't got one, I'm gonna call soon.
So, what, what are you getting?
I think they did, I think they want to speak before they do any filings, they, they contacted the town manager and asked for a meeting.
They can't file, if they haven't filed by this date any, so it, it won't be affecting it as far as that part of the screen, and whatever you've dealt with on the taxes for last year, which was supposed to go down, how will we be thrown out the window because of the fact that it's new ownership? Well, I'd like to, oh, I'm, I'm asking to find out because I want to know, because it's relevant to how people's tax bills are going to be handled in this community, and if in fact, the, the tax bill in turn, because I got told that it was supposed to be a two-year type of commitment of last year, which put everybody's taxes up, and if in fact, the tax bill in turn was gonna go down this year, and when you've got new ownership, that's thrown out the window, so if people's taxes are gonna continue to be at the same rate that they were last year as far as assessment, they're not gonna have any reductions.
We had a little reduction for this tax bill that we're just paying as of tomorrow. We had a little reduction for this tax bill that we're just paying as of tomorrow.
No, that's only based on estimates paid in on last year. That has no relevance.
To answer your question, we intend to meet with them in the near future.
Can we get some answers after that?
One answer would be Bruce, that when they bought, when they bought the, the power, you know, the dams, they also honored the contracts that were in place at that time. So they would be. Well, we would have heard if they weren't. Uh, and they're honoring whatever.
Heard if they weren't. I'm going to.
We haven't heard that they didn't honor.
And you haven't heard that they did.
But they bought it.
Right, and at this point, there's a process that's laid out where, where, you know, we're, we're going to meet with them. Uh, the Moore Dam Committee will get involved. We'll also be working with our consultants. And after we're able to all work together with the representatives of Moore Dam, and we have an actual agreed upon figure, then they could become a little information. But up until that point, it's, uh, it's in the process. So, but as soon as we have an answer, the, the bubble could have that too.
Anything else? Is there any other public comment, Ralph?
Uh, Friday night, I went over to the F-ops, whatever it was over there. They did a fantastic job over there. The place was packed. I believe that was Parks and Recreation put that on, right?
That's correct.
They did a fantastic job that placed that park with pack. Everybody's having a great time. My grandson went over there. He just had an absolute fantastic time. So kudos to Parks and Recreation. Also to the kids that are using that recreation system because I, I sit there at my house and watch them go back and forth in front of my house all day long. And they're having a ball going back and forth to the pool. Sometimes we become summer showers. And when they come back from the pool, they're soaked by the time they get back to the building. But, uh, the Parks and Recreation seems to be doing a good job this summer, especially that, that event.
Nice to hear. Thanks.
Hands off to them. It was fantastic. I, I attended it. It was absolutely great.
What do you think of the fireworks this year?
I thought they were pretty good. I thought they were really cool. Uh, my grandson liked them and then I thought they were really nice. And, uh, you know, the, the place we could sit and watch them was perfect. Plus we had some Bonoff over here at the same time and we had some Bonoff over here at the same time.
Those are the old ones.
The whole neighborhood was doing it, you know, like, like.
Who set off the fireworks?
I mean, but who had the authority?
So, uh, with the Parks and Rec coordinated, uh, the fireworks, um.
We gave permission for the party to occur, right?
Oh.
Right, I mean, but did they set them off? That was my question.
A contractor, licensed contractor did.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, uh, process should involve prior approval from the, uh, select board. I think at least for the, some of the outdoor activities to, but I think there was some, uh, last minute coordination happening.
Did the fire department?
Fire department's involved.
Check with the people who were firing off the fireworks?
Yes, we did. We inspected the site. We, we inspected the permit. We did the onsite evaluation prior to the shooting.
Mortar security and all.
We stood by during the shoot. And all.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like a great event. Thank you.
It was great. It did great. Now I have just one more on it. I, I've been in town. We've lived here for twenty-two years. And every year I go to the little, every week I go to landfill with my trash bags and two, three dollar trash bag. And I'm in the landfill. It's never looked as bad as it does right now. I don't know if you guys have been there recently or not, but we drove through there and all I thought of when through there was that line, God, this place is horrible. It was just, everything's piled up everywhere. You say that they're, they're making good money, that their, their revenues are up, but there's a hill back there. There's metals piling up, metal piling up on the road, on both sides of the road. There's mattresses piled sky high. I don't know if it's an issue of, of personnel or not, or if it's, it's a matter of getting some volunteers in there to help clean up some of that stuff. But, uh, I just want to make a comment that maybe you guys should take a, you know, drive by, take a look at it. But in twenty-two years, it's never looked as bad as it does now. And I thought it just, it was a bad inflection on a town because not only Littleton residents used that, but it's residents from everywhere use, use our, our system. So you may just want to drive by and take a look and, and see what it looks like for yourself.
Well, thank you, Ralph. I see Andrew making notes, so you can do it.
Thank you.
Uh, Rudy, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to ask you guys a question. The, uh, because I don't know about that, so I'm going to ask a question. After any committee meetings, if any committees, like zoning, uh, any other committee, come up with a, a final decision about anything that people present, it's like, you know, they want to build a house, they want to build, you know, something else. Do, if, that final decision, it comes to the board and you guys look at it to see nothing at all? That just means, okay, I got it. That just means, uh, the committee, it's like planning, zoning, any other committee, uh, they are above of, uh, how would they say? Above a final solution to make sure that whatever they desire is done by the law. I mean, you know, sometime, let's just say if I ask, you know, if I presented something, you know, to the zoning, that I want to build a fence in my house, maybe because to the people in zoning, then for whatever reason, you know, oh, that's rude, forget it. No, they deny it. Do, do you guys get involved or stop right there?
We don't get involved, but if, in, in the case of zoning, if.
Not just the zoning, all the other committees.
Let's use an example. If, if you were denied something in zoning that you wanted, it doesn't come to us, but you have a right to appeal it. If the appeal is shut down, you have a right to take it to court.
Take it to court to the, I'm sorry, take it to court to the committee, the zoning committee or the town. That's what I'm.
You would go to state court. If, if you want to, your first right, if you don't like the decision.
Yes.
Is to appeal to the zoning board to be reheared.
Yes.
They then will listen to your appeal. Usually the criteria that's needed is new evidence as to why they should change their mind. In the absence of that, they're going to uphold their previous decision. You then have the right to go to state court to have that decision overthrown. You don't go to us. You don't need us. You go right past us and go to state court.
That just means any decision, now any committee that you guys appoint, this particular individuals to represent that committee, you guys just wash out your hands after, you know.
Well, that's not, it's not us washing our hands. That's the procedure under state law.
Under state law.
We don't have authority to overrule anything they decide.
You have no authority to rule, even if it's a kind of complete interest or it's a, it's a, eh, eh, you know, quote unquote, special favors and so and so.
That could all be happening, but the selectmen don't have authority to deal with.
If you have a complaint about an individual or a group of individuals, that's different than appealing a case. And yes, we appointed them. The complaint probably ought to go to the town manager. Then it'll come to us.
What I'm trying to say is because you three guys, it's the one appointed these individuals to that particular committee because in, in your opinion, this particular individual that belonged to that committee, it will do a good job, right? You know, it would be unfair, you know, I mean, fair, you know, to everybody in town, right? That's the way it should be, right?
Yeah, we're responsible for those that we appoint. We're not responsible for a decision that they make. If you think that decision is based on prejudice or wrongdoing, and that's a complaint against the individual and that should come to us.
Should come to you. Uh, okay. May I ask another question?
Go ahead. You still have it.
Okay, uh, eh, if it, if it's possible, you know, according to, you know, the, the right to know bill, you know, if I have a copy of this new, you know, harassment policy and stuff like that, it's very interesting, you know, to know the way it changes, stuff like that. And also another thing, you know, we've been talked so much in, not just in Littleton, but every time, you know, us that belongs to the right to know committee, uh, all over the, the state. You know, one thing that I've been put on the table down in Concord is why, you know, this particular board, right? You know, every week, you know, meeting after meeting, meeting after meeting, always goes to no public session without letting people, you know, people know if you guys hire, fire, or what it is. Because as a father, you know, as the little thing that I know about right to know is that that particular individual that you guys are going to discuss, all right? Is going to be the first one to be asked if that partic, you know, if he wants to be heard by the public, if he wants to be heard by the citizens. I mean, you know, doesn't have to be, you know, everything close, you know, that nobody knows about how it's going now and stuff like that. Even a, a, I think you're still, you know, that every time I ask her something, she's, you know, she go up better two hundred percent, I think you go down, you know. But what I'm trying to say, don't you think it is board, it goes into, you know, no public session more than, you know, more than they have to, I mean, you know, it's just.
What's your question? What's your question, Rudy?
My question is this, that every time you guys, we have a meeting, you guys have the, you know, going to go to the no public session, okay? That no public session, or usually it's done for firing, hiring, or, you know, take, uh, let's just say, you know, if somebody makes, you know, does something wrong, right, you know, to whatever. Now, why this particular individual that you guys talk about, doesn't have to tell you guys and say, hey, if you want, you know, firing, I want everybody to know about?
Well, I, on my five years on this board, there has been two personnel actions taken where people were terminated. The part of the process in doing that is they're asked if they want a public hearing or a private hearing. And in both those situations, we usually go in under contracts. We don't, we don't go in under personnel issues. But I've participated in two decisions which led to terminations of people. But those, those rules that are set by the state and then, you know, we adopt, we follow those very closely. Because if we don't, uh, you know, what you're suggesting is there could be a problem. But when we go into non-public, it's very rarely for that kind of an issue, very, really honestly, very rarely, um, where it's a personnel issue that's leading to a termination or to some sort of.
Or to fire somebody.
Right.
Because as a father, I know, I just found out that, uh, in the last six months, you guys hired two people in different departments and nobody knows about. I mean, you know, because of.
They were voted on in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Bruce?
Uh, one thing in, in what I believe what you were making comment about was in the legal process of what it is. A petition, a petition can be signed by anybody and put on the town warrant. Let's say if you had a road and you wanted to have it taken over by the town, you don't have to go through it. If you go and it was turned down by the legal process of what you have, you can still petition and put it on here. If the people voted on it, it would be passed. So you should be including that in yours, in your suggestion, not just going to the point where the court, because people have the rights to still go on, put them on under a petition title. And if it's voted on, it, it can still go through.
You're absolutely a hundred percent right. My example was zoning board.
But you didn't tell that to us out here.
Hmm.
I, I thought I was clear. If I wasn't, my example was zoning board. Karen?
And I just had one thing to add that I know Rudy was asking about all committees. Not all committees have ordinances or certain rules that they follow, like the budget committee reports to the selectmen and the selectmen make the decision on the budget. They're not like the zoning board or planning board. So I just, or the upper house commission. That group has a process that they need to go through and things that they're charged up.
They recommend to the state.
Yeah, it's just, I, 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 I brought the point, I mean, because, you know, I personally, I mean, I know that you guys, okay, I've been seeing a lot of celebrities, you know, in town and a lot of, you know, special favors and that, um, you know, that going on and.
Hey, your, your planning boards, another example of.
I don't think so. It's right, but.
Kind of mixed authority. It recommends to the selectmen usually. However, if for instance, they wanted to change zoning or the town plan or something of that nature, they recommend to the selectmen, but they could also get it on the warrant without selectmen's concurrence. So they're, they're, they're all little hybrids of different levels of authority or not.
The point is this, that.
But in any event, any appointed committee member of any committee, if you've got a personnel problem or issue with one of them.
I'm not the way already, you know, I don't know if it's a copy, you know.
It'll, it'll.
I'm pretty sure I have a copy. Hey, I want to hear the answer on that particular item because otherwise it's going to precede stuff like that. You know, I personally, you know, I tell you guys because I'm honest with you guys the way I think you guys are honest with us, the citizens and the taxpayers all the time, you know. And my honesty is that in couple of meetings that I went, you can tell, you can see that was special favor to certain individual. It's right there. It's right there. You don't have to go to college. It's right there. You see it. Eh, you know, if it's something, you know, that, eh, eh, is going to come up and they're serious, hey, let's go in court. Let's do whatever you got to do because, you know, but that's what it is. Eh, I see that. Eh, unfortunately, you know, the town manager is there. At this, a couple of meetings, the town manager was over there. Of course, you know, it's neutral on a particular subject because like you say, you know, zoning and the other committees, they make the, you know, down there. But, and let's see what we got. Thank you, everyone.
Is there any other public comment? If being done, we'll move to board action. We have, I believe, three items. The first of which, the signing of the town clerk's two thousand seventeen dog warrant. Um, should I read it? I guess I should read it. The following is a list of those owners of dogs that have failed to license or not renewed their dog licenses pursuant to RSA four sixty-six colon one. The local governing body shall, within twenty days from June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, issue a warrant to a local official authorized to issue a civil forfeiture for each unlicensed dog. And we, the three of us have signed this and I've got six or seven pages of unlicensed dogs.
These are somewhere at the end of how many there are. Last page shows you the number of them.
Okay. Records printed one hundred and eighteen. We need a motion, Andy. I have a motion to, some of that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. We need also to act on the zoning officer, whose name again was.
David Moberly.
David Moberly. Is there a motion to appoint David to the zoning officer job from now and through March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen?
So move. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item was, oh, the new road name for the mobile home park was Crow View.
Crow's View Drive.
Drive. Is there a motion to do that?
Uh, I guess we got to get to the discussion stage, so I make a motion that we, so that we.
Do a second.
So we have a motion in a second. We had no public opinion on it. Um, is there any discussion here?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, are we talking about crows possessive or crows plural?
That looks like possessive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's Crow's is in the name.
Yeah.
So it's not possessive. It's, that's actually the last name of the, right? But their last name is Crow.
That's right.
So it's a, it's a small thing, but just with my experience in dealing with E nine one addressing for many years, it's a, it becomes a pain in the ass down the road, whether the possessive and all that stuff and that stuff.
Maybe that should be eliminated. Just have Crow's multiple.
Crow.
Here, here's what we have on our map right now. Rockstring Drive, McBean Circle, Mc, yeah, Kelly Lane, MacIver Road, Joe LaHoot Lane, Tuck Lane, Rotovec Drive, Berny Road. There's no function. It's just the name and the road or the drive, you know, whatever it is. The designation as a mobile home park isn't listed, I mean, whatever the function is. The closest thing we get here is, is to Rotovec perhaps, or Berny, where we understand these are manufacturing plants. But, um, I struggled with this for a little while and then I decided, there's quite a few examples of other people still with us or passed on whose names are on these roads. I don't know if there's any laws that-
I'm curious of what are.
To Franco's point, I think there's, I think there's some spelling mistakes in that. We need to look at it again. I thought it was C R O W E.
Yeah.
It is. It is. You're right. It's C R O W E.
At his point.
It's good, I, anyways, that's why I bring it up because it creates hassle down the road.
Should we table this and get further study?
He did a nice show on the suburbs and he let us shoot fireworks there. I just think there's a misspelling there. Franco's right.
Should just be Crow, Crow, Crow View Drive?
Crow View Drive.
C R O.
E, W, E, no S.
Yeah, it's, that's what it's, that's the spelling. Longtime family.
I don't want to-
Something like amend.
It's not that big a deal. I just-
I'd make the motion to approve.
We need to amend the motion or to vote on this motion yea or nay. Who made the motion?
I did.
Would you like to amend it or to vote it down?
I would like to amend the motion to read Crow View Drive with no S.
C R O W E. That's an amended motion. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe that is it. Right? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
If, if I can just make one quick end announcement, I do apologize. Just on the upcoming meetings, um-
Oh.
Yeah. This will pop back up there. It's not popping up. But tomorrow night, the, this isn't an official town meeting, uh, but Grand State Power Link is proposing a, uh, utility expansion. It's going to be holding a meeting, uh, at the Opera House in the Tower Room. And it is open to the public. I believe post guards were sent directly to a number of people. Um, but I just wanted to let everybody know that if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to make that, but if you can, if they give handouts that we don't already have, I definitely, can you make sure I get some?
Uh, they've been changed a little, so there'll be new ones.
Yeah.
I'll still entertain a motion for adjournment unless there's something else.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.